Order, we'll have our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Neil, you going to deliver our invocation for us this morning or this afternoon?
Yes.
All right.
Let us pray. "Those who trust in the Lord are like Mount Zion, which cannot be shaken but endures forever." Psalm 125, verse 1. Sovereign of the universe, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, we thank you for the opportunity to acknowledge your sovereignty over this board and over the city of Tallahassee and over the land which you have entrusted to this commission to administer, and for your efforts to flood those of this commission with your presence, love, and glory. We thank you for blessing those of this board and staff for their service to you and to this city in accordance with your word. We thank you for quickening the hearts and minds of each of the commission this hour to your purposes, for each of the issues that are brought before them, and for granting to each the discernment and wisdom of Solomon as you guide them through their deliberations, and for empowering them with the courage of David to arrive at those decisions which will be in line with your purposes for our residents and for our city, as you seek to unlock the economic potential of Tallahassee and the urban growth boundary in the days ahead. May the one who creates peace in the heavens flood each of those of this commission and its staff with his peace and love in the hours ahead and the people of God said. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, we'll open up at this point for any comments from any citizens that are in attendance. I'll remind you also, we'll have opportunity for public comment for each item as it's considered, so if there's a specific item you're waiting for, you may want to wait until we begin discussion on that. If anybody has anything in general to bring before the commission? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to reports from members of the planning commission. Any reports from other boards or organizations need to be made? A little later on in the agenda here, I think you'll see we're going to need to discuss appointing a new representative to the Board of Zoning Appeals as well, so something, one of those boards we normally hear from, just think about that, and we'll talk about that when we get there. Next item is the approval of minutes from our previous mission, our meeting from the June 15 meeting. Those minutes are included in your packet. We approve the minutes as published.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's accepted as published. Next, we begin our regular agenda. First item is a request for final plat approval on property located on Deer Creek Lane and Gene Drive. Staff background recommendation.
This is a final plat for the dedication of ingress egress only across the Watson property to the Whitley property. So it's providing access for the Whitley property to Gene Drive, and you'll notice Deer Creek Lane at the top there that the Whitley property actually fronts. This has been forwarded us from Mark W. Franklin County to approve since it's in our urban growth boundary. The, in your packet, there's also documentation of, from Court of Appeals between Shea Han and Franklin County upon some issues related to Deer Creek Lane and understanding if you're viewing this as Deer Creek Lane is not approved except for the county roadway, and there's a court case that goes back quite a ways back, and Franklin County is not issuing building permits on lots front of Deer Creek Lane, and this provides a 30-foot ingress egress utility easement off of Gene Drive as a way to the property. So this is not a subdivision. There is no exchange of property in this plat. It is for the dedication of ingress egress only. And Nicholas Northcutt with Northcutt Associates is here that can provide some additional information, but at this point, I'll read the recommendation and then we can hear from Mr. Northcutt. The request for plat approval has been seen before the development committee, and all comments have been addressed, and staff recommends approval of final plat for the property on Deer Creek Lane near Gene Drive.
Okay, and so staff's recommendation is to go ahead and approve?
To approve, yes.
Great. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question, just to see nothing wrong, but because you give us an idea just how far out Rock Creek Road this is, where is it relative to the Johnson Recreation Area, for instance?
I think it's past there, just maybe a couple of miles, or maybe a mile or two past that. It's not real far out of town.
Okay, so this is in the urban growth area?
Just as a quick reference, I know this is not to scale, but the city limits ends here in the red, and that's about where the soccer complex is, you're talking, you know, you're three or four miles outside, and this is the road in question.
Okay.
It's still inside our urban growth boundary here in the blue, but this is the road in, the small road in question, but it is three, four miles past Roger Soccer Complex and the Correction Academy.
And maybe about 30-foot ingress egress?
Yes, sir. That's the minimum that Franklin County will allow, and really, it's just a secondary access. He does have an easement on Deer Creek Lane, which is a 50-foot easement, however, it's not a publicly dedicated right-of-way. So he's got, you know, easement in his deed that he can use Deer Creek Lane, but the 30-foot was put there as a secondary source to get his frontage on a public road where there was water and that was a duly-accepted public road.
And that'll allow him then to get a building permit from Franklin County to build it?
Nicholas, that is a private ingress egress utility. It's not a public dedication of right-of-way.
Got you. All right. Any other questions?
I move to approve.
Motion to approve. All second. Any further discussion, any public comment? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And again, that's just our recommendation to Franklin County. It's ultimately up to them. Okay. Next item. Item number two is a request for site plan approval for property located at the intersection of North Jackson and Ledford Mill. Staff background recommendation.
This is a site plan of the property located at Air Park Drive and Cedar Lane.
Okay. Missed one?
I missed one.
All right.
Okay, this is a site plan for property located North Jackson Street and Ledford Mill Road, which is across from the Loews.
Property adjacent to the car wash facility there on a vacant piece of property.
Request is for commercial development of a dental office. This has been before the zoning appeals on July 7th, we received a variance of 15-foot for the rear setback. The site plan meets all minimum requirements. Staff recommends approval for the site plan located at the intersection of North Jackson and Ledford Mill. And Kenny Sadler is here representing the project.
This is across from Loews, you said?
It is. Loews is there on Ledford Mill to the lower, to the left. And this is the property, Ledford Mill Road, as it extends to the right of North Jackson Street to Flower Town Road. This is the property that T-Dot, Arch of Transportation, altered and changed the right-of-way in that section as it progressed from Old Jackson over Flower Town Road and altered that lot in the easements back when Whitey was dead. And that's the, that was the basis for the variance in the Board of Zoning Appeals, is that that lot was directly altered by T-Dot.
So the variance allows them to put the building where they've got it because of the, they have such a wide easement on the backside of that right now, so it's so much wider than all the rest of the town, Flower Town.
So this site plan for a dental office, it, there's a number of utilities, you can see progressing from the bottom to the top there, right adjacent to the building. There's a number of utilities and tight setbacks, and all those they worked through with the site plan have gotten approval from Tallahassee Utilities Board and of course, Board of Zoning Appeals. And Kenny, was that a sewer line or electric line that progressed through the site there?
Yeah, there's an existing fiber optic and telephone line. It's not a power line anymore. But TUV worked with us on that to allow us to be in that easement that they had on that property there, because they didn't need that wind since it was no longer a power line.
And that's an overhead or that's underground?
There is an overhead there.
Okay. Can you flip back one slide, please?
Yes, sir.
That may help. So if you look, the bluish areas are the areas that are not, I mean, so the green areas where the easements are. You notice how much wider the easement is on that property than it is the next property down Flower Town, right? And so that was the basis for the Board of Zoning Appeals looking at it and saying that.
T-Dot took a lot of the right-of-way, or a lot of the property for their right-of-way there, upside and adjacent to heels, implement there, so kind of put a hardship on the property. I'm surprised, you know, it's getting the building on it, to be honest with you, but I'm glad that it is.
Is there a red, there's a red light right there?
There is.
Okay.
Yeah, their entrance is going to be straight across from the car wash entrance. It's right there. Any other questions, comments? I move that we approve as requested. Motion second. Any public comment, further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Our next item is a request for a site plan approval. Property located at the intersection of Air Park Drive and Cedar Lane. Staff background recommendation.
Staff received request for site plan approval of the property located at the intersection of Air Park Drive and Cedar Lane. This is adjacent to the ADC Federal Credit Union, this in the upper-left corner, right at the corner of Cedar Lane. Property is zoned I-1 restricted manufacturing warehouse. The request is for a commercial development. Project went before the Board of Zoning Appeals on July 7th and received a variance for a use permitted on review in the I-1 zoning district. Site plan meets all minimum requirements and has been through the development committee. Staff recommends approval of the site plan for the property at the intersection of Air Park and Cedar. And this is quickly a 5,378 square foot building for a high doctor. And during the early reviews, the development committee recommended driveways be off of Air Park Drive instead of Cedar Lane, and that's what they have located here. And I think there were also a number of utility easements and items that they worked through, but also to provide sidewalk access across the property onto, on Air Park Drive along the frontage which they've got in. Kind of wandering through a maze of utilities there, but staff again recommends approval of the site plan.
So the sidewalk extends all the way just on Air Park Drive, or do they?
It extends on Cedar Lane, along the frontage of Cedar Lane, and then it stopped and terminated as it stubbed out onto Air Park Drive, and they've extended it along the airport, Air Park Drive frontage.
Maintaining the existing sidewalk on Cedar Lane and extending that down to Air Park. Okay.
Mike, can you go to the next slide and show us exactly, is that the same drive as Jacobs that you go into Jacobs?
No, we went the back way.
Yeah, it's not the main way to Jacobs.
Okay.
Scott, you mentioned an existing sidewalk? Did I misunderstand?
There's an existing sidewalk along Cedar Lane that was installed with a roadway improvements, and then it snubs into Air Park Drive and terminates right at the intersection.
I think you're right, Ray. I don't think it's been built out up to that corner yet.
There's no existing sidewalk barriers there?
There's an existing sidewalk up to the intersection there at Cedar Lane, and then it stops, and then we picked it up from there and took it on across Air Park.
Yes, it was installed the last couple of years with a white project.
As far as, so what we are considering here today is actually a use permitted upon review, is that correct? Or that's already been covered by the?
That has been through.
The Board of Zoning Appeals. So this is just site plan?
I'll move to approve.
Motion second. Any further discussion or questions from citizens? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is a request for final plat approval for minor division of property at 1282 Turkey Creek Drive. Staff background recommendation.
Staff received request for final plat approval for minor division of property. Okay, the 1282 Turkey Creek Drive. This is in Franklin County, but inside the city's urban growth boundary. The request is to divide a 5.22 acre lot into three separate tracts. The property is, again, outside of the city limits, but inside the urban growth boundary. It's also at the edge of Tallahassee Utility Board's service district with water and at...
Chris, tell me the other utility.
...to the grove, but it's also come through water rations, so they go through some service issues there, and this is what we own in Step Creek as well. The plat meets all the minimum requirements and has been through the development advisory committee. Staff recommends approval of the plat of the property at 1282 Turkey Creek Drive.
Is this on the other side of Hermitage Estates?
It is further out. Chris, you have to...
How much further? I don't know where Hermitage Estates is.
On the Turkey Creek subdivision, that's my line.
This is Ellis Acres, where, so this is Turkey Creek Road. You go to the end of Turkey Creek Road, Ellis Acres, which is right across the street at Shea Han, the smaller subdivision. You go on around the corner like you're going back to Highway 130 that way, and then the road splits five ways up there at the intersection. It's called Hope Lane, and so that's just barely, just barely outside the city. It's located about right there. Past Ellis Acres is we, as we know it, stop.
Okay. Okay, yes.
It's kind of confusing because in that intersection, you have Turkey Creek Road and Turkey Creek Drive. This parcel is located on Turkey Creek Drive.
Okay.
That's pretty close to city limits, though, right there, isn't it?
We used to live when I was growing up, that was our farm there, so it's right before them. We used to be inside the city and outside the city. That's why I didn't realize how close that was to that, but it's out a lot further. That's where Darryl Hammer's at.
This is kind of the road that you take.
Before you get to there.
Go up back to the road, back to the left. That goes to Linda Lane and Turkey Creek Drive that way. This Hope Lane extends on out to, Scott, what's that subdivision out past Hope Lane that's in Franklin County? It actually intersects with Gordon Neck Road.
Yeah.
This goes on Gordon Neck Road, and then this goes back to Highway 130, just a couple lots down the road.
I can't think of the name of it right off.
Ever, is Ever, you don't want to talk about that, you know, at the end of Hope Lane.
Maybe Scott View or something like that. No, period.
So some strangely shaped lot there in the middle.
It is, that one in the middle.
Yes.
I guess it really doesn't cause any problems. It's just different, so, in that, I guess to include the dry pond and the metal building in that, in that lot, too. So staff's recommendations approve as requested?
I'll approve. I would only ask, what was the, what was the logic for that middle lot, the shape of that?
Joe Orr.
Taking a piece of property and dividing it into three lots.
Joe Orr wanted to keep the barn with the middle tract, that's all I can tell you.
Say again?
Joe Orr wanted to keep the barn with the middle tract. That's all I know.
Okay, so that's the access to the barn?
Yes.
Well, that answers my question.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further questions, comments from citizens? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Motion carries.
All right, next item is a request for final plat approval for minor division of property located at 1306 Old Estle Springs Road. Staff background recommendation.
Staff received request for final plat approval of minor division of property located at 1306 Old Estle Springs Road. The request is to move the rear property line between two existing lots. Both lots are zoned R-1, low density, so it's inside the city limits. Final plat meets all minimum requirements, has been through the development committee. Staff recommends approval of the plat for the property at 1306 Old Estle Springs Road. So the intent of the plat is to shift a rear property line, as Mike sees there, old property lines and new location of the property line, and so that elongates the lot one and decreases the size of lot two, but it keeps access to the metal building in the back.
I assume that's the reason for the shift of the property line?
Yes.
So it's just a shift, a relocation of existing rear property line.
So we have a request from one of the two lot owners. Do we have verification from the other lot owner that this is?
They'll both have to sign the plat.
Right.
That's right.
And they both requested, and we know that they're both going to sign this. This is not something we're going to look at and say, yeah, that's great, and somebody else is going to say, oh, there's no way.
As far as I know, they are both Orr.
We had a call, we had a call about this about two months ago. The owner of lot two has run into some financial hardships, and the owner of lot one was just seeking some more land to put some, like another storage building or some other things in the back, and so she, he's actually in the process of purchasing that so that he can have a little bit more backyard.
So we have indication that?
Yes, I had a call with both on the phone.
I make a motion, we approve.
All second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, our next item is the proposed amendment to Section 4 of the zoning ordinance, commercial zones. I'll start with this, and I'll turn it over to staff. So the, as you know, we're already reviewing the zoning ordinance, doing our top-to-bottom periodic review and update of the ordinance. The city staff and the mayor have received some inquiries about developments in the downtown area, our C1 zone. As it's written, the C1 zone is one of those places where it's kind of ambiguous, particularly on the inclusion of potential residential use in the C1 zone. If you look to C2, C2 says explicitly, can't have any residential except, commercial, except for the hotel motel kind of use. The intent when we put it together was that you could do a mixed-use development. You could do something other than, you know, have a shop on the first floor, you know, apartments or whatever on upper floor, but it wasn't spelled out, and through editing, whatever, it just is not super clear in the document that is specifically allowed. So what the staff and the administration are asking is that we make, provide them some recommended language that the Board of Mayor and Alderman could consider to make a change to the existing zoning ordinance that would accommodate and clarify that one. Did I capture all that, Scott?
I believe so.
Okay. So what we have in front of us here is the commercial zones, C1 and C2, and then a draft ordinance to amend that, to make it very specifically that in a C1 zone, residential use permitted upon review, except in the store or basement of letting the street great. And then it also adds explicitly the uses prohibited of sexually oriented businesses, specifically prohibited in C Division 1 or C Division 2. This was handled in the document writ large, in that there's only one zone where those businesses are allowed, and that's in the I-3 zone, so, but adding it here doesn't affect that one way or the other, it just makes it in the downtown area, those kinds of places are excluded. So if you look at page 29, that's the current ordinance. Is that correct, Scott?
That's correct.
So again, if you read through 29, you can see there's nothing in C1 about residence. We do have convenience and neighborhood commercial centers, and often neighborhood commercial centers are mixed-use developments. And then when you look at C2, we do specifically have in there the... Yeah, but towards the bottom, hotels and motels excluding other residential activities, so. Again, this is the way it reads today, and it's not clear whether or not that would be allowed. So what we would be recommending to Board of Mayor and Alderman would be a change that would make it clear that upon review, a residential use other than on the ground floor or in a letting basement would be allowed. The staff's recommendation?
Is to recommend to the Board of Mayor and Alderman favorable recommendation of this ordinance.
So the other approaches, right, so this is not something that we think is, would be good in our downtown area. Obviously, we don't need to recommend that. If it's something that we felt like we needed to wait and put all of our recommendations forward with the changes to the zoning ordinance once we're done with it, we could do that. I would say that the mayor and the staff have asked that we take care of this fairly soon. There's some indication that perhaps there are some people interested. There are certainly some parcels available for sale or recently sold in downtown that they could be redeveloped, and if someone wanted to do them in this way right now, we'd rather be cautious at least, if not unwilling to proceed until they got the change made.
Did the existing ordinance, as it was prior to any changes, did that permit the upstairs apartment, living apartment in our, in the business?
To the best of my knowledge, our previous zoning ordinance did or did not?
It did, but the verbiage was not as you have here.
Right.
It was taken from some of the older building codes and some of the older zoning ordinances. The new terminology that cities are using is more like a mixed-use or CR zone where you're combining these two. That terminology was not around. That original document goes back to the late 1990s, mid-1990s, and so the terminology that they were seeking now, it was in place because we have some of those uses above places like London's and there now, but when this one got adopted in '09, that language was not brought forward. However, it was probably allowed, it's just somewhere in the editing unit, that's what we can tell as the reason it was, it had fallen off. All of the other zones, either strictly allowed or strictly prohibited, and for some reason, this got lost in translation.
Do you recall if it was a use permitted on review in the old ordinance?
I don't recall.
I don't either.
It was very, it was a use permitted on review, I guess.
That's the way I see most mixed uses as being a mixed, as a use permitted on review, and that's the way that you're proposing, we're proposing it now.
And again, frankly, from my perspective, if we're okay with mixed-use development in our downtown area, I don't see what adding review to it really helps, right? I would be more in favor of just explicitly allowing it and not requiring it come in on review, but, you know, either way, I'm comfortable with the change. I was here when we made this change. It was certainly not our intent to prohibit it. We do have to recognize the fact there is existing use, and some of that existing use goes back well before zoning was even established, or even if zoning wasn't established until 84, 85. until 84, 85, somewhere in the mid-eighties. And the zoning ordinance that we had that came to us, you know, for update, was substantially still that same zoning ordinance, it had been updated for some new building codes and that kind of stuff, but other than that, it was, it was more or less the original zoning ordinance when we got it. It was very long and not particularly useful for a lot of things, and so we've made some major changes to it, and this is one of the fallouts is that...
Well, there's several buildings there that have the two stories, so if they couldn't utilize the top, it might be, you know, we want to bring business here, so if someone is able to use that top even if they have to live there, then, you know, we don't see an issue with that.
I agree, and yeah, we've talked before that there's a dearth, you know, we have quite a, quite a bit of income-controlled apartments within, there's really only two apartment complexes in the city that are not income-controlled. There's not a lot of middle, mid-level income or mid-level rent, if you will, properties. You're either buying or renting a house, or you're renting an inexpensive apartment. And so encouraging loft-type apartment developments, those kinds of things in the downtown area certainly would help that.
And for protection of the adjacent buildings, there's some fairly stringent, more recent codes in terms of fire safety and electrical and other things, so it's not a, just throw somebody's bed up there. It's pretty stringent, making sure that it's safe.
Right. They still have to meet all of the building codes, right? So only people who are grandfathered to those previous codes are people who have been using it that way all along, right? So as it changes hands and if somebody does try to develop in this way, they will be required to follow the current building codes.
Well, I would suggest that it's the coming way of developing an area. If you look around some of the larger communities, it is a very common thing to have retail down low and apartments above. So I think we're just catching up by doing this.
Well, and again, I would say we intended to catch up back in 2009, we may have editorially missed this one, so.
I believe that's what happened, I went back with Mr. Ballson this extensively last week, I think what happened is this may got called an editorial change is more than a deliberate action by anybody's party. It got called on two pages, and I firmly believe there was an intent from the verbiage that we had and the other supporting documents, just somewhere in between the two that was dropped off.
It's one of those areas, there's actually two whole paragraphs missing that we normally, every other one has those two paragraphs and it's just gone, so. I was the chairman at the time, so it's my fault. So I apologize for creating this problem. So we have before us a proposed ordinance, again, this ordinance reads that this is a use permitted upon review. If that's a position that we'd like to take, then that's what we would propose that they take on.
Motion.
Okay. We've got a motion to recommend to the Board of Mayor and Alderman as documented here.
Second.
Second. Any public comment? Further discussion? Any questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So that will go out now here, Board of Mayor and Alderman, the recommendation you guys will have to do here, standard two readings and all that kind of stuff to decide whether they're adopted. All right. Thorny issue number one out of the way. Our next challenging issue for today is, we have, we've lost one of our members. Mr. Pearson's residence changed and he moved outside of the city limits and the urban growth boundary, and so he's no longer able to serve on the planning commission. His service was greatly appreciated. One of the roles in which he was serving was as the representative of this body to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so in order to ensure that we maintain the ability to get forum for the Board of Zoning Appeals, we need to, as quickly as possible, appoint a replacement. So there's a number of restrictions. Our Alderman and mayoral representatives are not eligible to be appointed to those things. I know that gives them great, great distress, and so that leaves us to three people in the room currently. And Board of Zoning Appeals, Board of Zoning Appeals hears the appeals of the zoning ordinance. So if you want, we've already heard today, setbacks or putting commercial in an industrial area, or as we've just recommended, these new residential changes that would come to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So it meets as called, it's not a regularly meeting board, so certainly that's something we need. Now, the other thing I'm noticing here is this stormwater board, that's, that was not discussed prior. Is that a separate appointment, or is that one person to be appointed to both?
I understand it's one person appointed to both, is that...
That's right.
And do the boards meet together, or should that person expect to meet twice as often?
No, that board, that's the one on the board, probably won't meet anywhere in the year, it's a zoning board.
Okay.
Board of Zoning Appeals met once last year.
The other bit, I met it...
Twice, I'm sorry.
And the stormwater board is a new thing, really? Have we had a stormwater board of appeals before?
No, it's just been a pretty lengthy process, I think.
So if there's anyone accepting, the chair will be accepting nominations, or...
I dominate, Scott.
Second, motion.
Nomination for Scott. Any other nominations? All right, well, nomination and second for Scott. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
I believe that's called real reading. Hopefully willingly accepted as well, so I appreciate that.
Did I ask for it?
Did I? I appreciate that.
Excellent choice.
Doesn't sound like too many more meetings.
It shouldn't be a lot more meetings, it's certainly something that we need done. We do have a couple of issues that need to come before the Board of Zoning Appeals in the not-too-distant future, and they have had some challenges meeting forum, so having somebody reliable is going to be very important to me. All right, it's been a busy meeting. Next, we move into our administrative section, Construction Performance Bond Report, any changes? Okay. Thank you. Our next meeting, we'd like to set for Monday, August the 17th, 4:00 p.m. Study session will follow immediately. Anybody, I move that we set our next regular meeting to be Monday, August 17th at 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion second, okay. Any discussion or further comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is set. Do we have some zoning ordinance to discuss?
We do.
Excellent.
Want to take a break and sign plats?
We will do that. So I move that we adjourn and for five minutes and reconvene in study session. Can I get a second?
Take it.
I'm looking at the second. All in favor?
All.
Aye. Any opposed?